I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, a couple of announcements quickly. This meeting is being recorded by the board secretary. There were no executive sessions. Looks like everybody is here. Okay.
Steve is not here.
Oh, no. That's right. Okay. Mr. Akmanowicz is not here. Okay, first order of business is the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the February 22nd, 2018 minutes of the school board directors of the Quakertown Community School District meeting?
So moved. Second?
Was it Mr. Kern or Mr. Jackson? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, we're coming to the first of the general public comment sessions. We do have three people that have signed up. I would ask again, please keep your comments to between three to five minutes, and please follow good decorum, too. So, Madam Secretary, who do we have first?
Robert White Jr.
Please state your area of residence.
Two seven six five North Old Bethlehem Pike, Quakertown, Pennsylvania. I'd like to thank everybody for allowing me to speak for a couple of minutes. I'm very bad at public speaking, so I'll make this very brief. Guys, we have people in this room from the far left to the far right and everybody in between. We all feel very differently about guns and school violence and what to do about school violence. I'm a businessman, I'm a co-owner of RG White HVAC LLC. What I want to do, and I've talked to a couple of school board members, and I think, I hope I have your support, is I want to secure private funding to insert additional door jams in every single classroom in the Quakertown School District. There's many different kinds of door jams on the market right now. This guy Justin Case out of Wisconsin just invented one, slides under the door, and it makes it so you need a bulldozer to get into the classroom. Now, I'm not a teacher, I don't work in schools, I don't know much about schools, but I'm sick and tired of seeing these monsters come in and ravage our communities, hurt our young people, our amazing faculty, staff, teachers, and what they're doing is they're depriving our kids of the most basic fundamental right bestowed upon them by their Creator, which is the right to life. And I want to do something. I can get the funding, you can put it all on me, put it all on Bob White, on RG White, I'll get you guys whatever you need, and it's not going to cost the taxpayers a dime. I'm going to do it all through private business. Anybody object to this? I didn't think anybody would.
Mr. White, I've got a question.
Certainly, Mr. Klein.
I've read about this particular invention, I'll call it. Do you happen to have any information on what it looks like, or anything like that?
So, the reason I didn't come with more is because I kind of understood that this was supposed to be very brief and very quick. You can Google it, I can get you all the information. It's called Justin Case. This particular make is out of Wisconsin, costs roughly $105 per door, that's including installation. I know for a fact, people call me all day, they ask for money all day, and when they say it's going to be less than $500, I'm almost ready to write a check before the phone call's over. This is something private business is going to get behind. It's something that if, you know, we network and we get this on social media, I believe the press is here, if the press would like to, you know, talk to us, this is something that we can do very quickly. We can put it in Quakertown, and then we can show surrounding communities how quickly and easily Quakertown did this. We can kind of put Quakertown on the map. I met my wife on a flight from Los Angeles to Philadelphia, and when I told her I was from Quakertown, Pennsylvania, she said, "Don't you guys drive around in horses and buggies?" I was like, "Sorry, I'm in a committed relationship with my cousin right now, I can't take you out anymore." This is something I'm very passionate about, because I have six little children, and I want to do something. And what I need from you guys is an approval to let me go out and get this funding, to tell these businesses, this is what I want to get, and I want to know how many doors you have, how many doors you need. They make them, they go both ways. They make the ones that you can't push out, and then they make the ones, you know, they make like a chain that goes across it, so you can't push the other way, basically.
Mr. White, the one question I would have, I mean, I'm certainly not opposed to what you're proposing, but I'm not sure where you are personally with the administration on this idea of yours, but I don't think we're at a point where we want to approve it before you talk to the administration and get all the ducks in a row.
Certainly, I understand that completely.
I just, that's all I'm going to say. I mean, please, it's not a bad idea, please.
Absolutely, I'll be happy to provide all of you guys with my contact information. And it's not just me, I have a number of businesses. Brad McGurk, CEO from Red Five Graphics, Joe Bajoli from Bajoli Construction, Brian Davies is a great handyman, Phil Culp is behind this, I don't know if you guys know Culp Roofing, but I would never bet against Phil Culp, he's an amazing networker. This is, we want to make this community safer. There's a 1 in 52,000 shot that it happens in our community, but it's going to be somebody's community next.
But before you go full speed ahead, at least talk to our superintendent and the other administration individuals.
I want to, you know, Mr. Akmanowicz mentioned that, I met with him briefly a couple of days ago. Thank you so much, Dave, for your time, I really appreciate it. I'll be happy to leave all of my contact information, I will meet with each and every single one of you, including all of you. If you guys want to talk to me that badly, feel free, I'm not that interesting, but I'm very happy, and I thank you, Mr. Jackson, for your opinion on that.
Mr. White, from my perspective, I would just want to make sure, and Dr. Harner, I'm sure that you can speak to others, like officerly among others, but I just want to find out that this segues with some of the policies and plans that we have in place to make sure that that fits in, before you go to all the trouble to, you know, do your fundraising.
And I agree with you completely, Mr. Klein, it's like, and I've talked to many, many teachers, many teachers are behind this, but I don't want to go and tell these wonderful teachers, you know, I wouldn't expect them to tell me how to do plumbing.
Right.
I'm not going to tell them how to teach, and I'm not going to tell them what they need.
And to me, it sounds like a wonderful idea as well, but again, before you get, as Mr. Jackson said, before you get too far along, let's just make sure that there's a good fit here. Do you have any thoughts on that, Dr. Harner?
Well, first off, Mr. White, thank you very much. Are you one of our parents?
Yes, sir, I have.
If you saw my email out before we had the nor'easter on Friday, the blog before that, talking about the framework of what, we've been spending about four years looking at facilities, well, longer, before I got here, they hardened the front office by creating those fliers in between the front doors.
I saw some of that.
And some of it is not as well done as it should have been, and I've learned a lot over the last couple of weeks of things that were done before my time. Since I've been here, we've spent a lot of time working on critical incident planning, that's what we call it here.
And I want to help.
And.
I don't need to know the interiors of the school, I don't want to know.
Well, we're not going to be giving you all that.
I appreciate that, that's the worst thing that I would.
We're not going to give all that to you, but, one, I'm very grateful for it, we have a facilities meeting that I'll make sure that we have information, contact information, I'll find you, invite you to come and talk about your idea. I'm sure I can speak for the board, if it's the right thing to buy, we'll buy them tomorrow.
And my deal is?
Because if that's what we need to have. We have simple measures in there right now that work, and, but they're very rudimentary.
Rudimentary. I have friends, lock picking is a hobby, okay? People who pick locks, they're not all criminals. There are only four locks on the market right now that have, they call them unpickable. It just means that they haven't been picked yet, and Quakertown doesn't have any of these locks. And when I spoke to Mr. Stats, Craig Stats, about this, and he seems to like this idea very much, what I told him is, I said, "Craig, I can have all of these installed before you can get it to reconciliation in Harrisburg." And it's true, private business can move so much quicker than government, we can be so much more effective, and the big thing here is the taxpayers don't pay a penny unless they want to. I imagine many parents, many great parents will want to contribute to this, but we're not going to force them to. We're not going to have that debate about how much do we have to raise taxes for something that hopefully, I pray to God, we all pray, is never needed.
Dr. Harner mentioned a second ago that if it was the right thing to do, we would buy it in a second, but I'll be happy to say that if it's the right thing to do, and you're willing to, I'd be happy to take your money in a second.
I know you would, I know you would.
But they say, they say, "If you don't like your taxes, you can always pay more."
Yeah, I applaud your enthusiasm, and if the, you know, it's got to go through legal, you know, talking with, you know, the security and administration going through that, but if it turns out it is the right thing to do, you know, my business would be one of the ones that would absolutely contribute to the fund.
And I thank you so much for that, guys. Like I said, I just want to make our wonderful community just a little bit, a little bit safer, and we can do it, we can do it easily, we can do it very effectively. It'll be very.
We'll do the homework on it.
Okay, who shall I leave my contact information with?
Ms. Bishop.
You already have by signing up.
Oh.
And I'll find you.
Please find me.
You're a parent, I'll find you.
Google us, you know, we're, if you need to, RG White, and, you know, I'm not going to put my business name behind something that I'm not going to do, I mean incredibly, you guys are going to love it, it's going to be great for everybody. I thank everybody for their time.
Mr. White, just before you sign off, I ran it past, I work with fire planning associates, and they do.
Yes, we did speak briefly about that.
You know, so there are some things that we have to cover, and he meant, you know, one of my guys mentioned that fire marshals, for example, there's a lot more than just offering the, you know, I really appreciate your enthusiasm, and there's some things that I think need to be explored.
And if it's not going to be the right fit, if it's going to end up being more of a hazard than it is a safety mechanism, I certainly don't want to do it. That's something, you know, you guys are amazing people, you know, you've been elected to make the decisions best for the community, I will heed to your advice.
You've been elected, you don't have to go past that.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for all your time.
Thank you, Mr. White.
I appreciate it.
Great stuff, I think, I think we have to look at whatever options we have the ability to do, and I agree to make our schools safer, so I appreciated that.
Who's the next Madam Secretary?
Chuck Schumer.
Hi there. Chuck Schumer, Richland Township. What's that? I said, "Yet," and I haven't said anything, but now it's time. I want to talk briefly first about safety, and then just a quick couple of comments about budgets and some of the discussions that I've seen on our YouTube channel recently. So, safety and security has been, you know, near and dear to my heart, and we did an awful lot in the four years that I was on the board to make our schools a little bit harder targets, and none of the particulars I'll go into for obvious reasons, but it's near and dear because of a family person and a personal tragedy that I had about seven years ago, where my family was victim of horrible gun violence, had two family members murdered, and two other people were murdered at the same time, in the middle of a hurricane, and I was the next target. And it was up to me to get my family to a place of security in the middle of a hurricane when a deranged family member by marriage went about murdering my sister, my niece, her friend, and a seven-year-old child. So, this, and I've never talked about this publicly, this is the first time that I've talked about this publicly in seven years, but every time one of these things happened, the first knee-jerk reaction is, "Take the guns away." Well, you know, there's a balance, and there are times that, in my situation, there was nobody there to help us. State police couldn't help us, they were too busy, they were looking for the guy. Quakertown, Richland Township police were too busy, they were looking for the guy, including in my neighborhood, and it was, "We'll help you if you can make it to the police station." And I was happy that I was able to make sure that I was able to protect myself and my family as best I could, and I got those folks, my folks, to a place of security where we spent the next 12 hours while this was all played out. So, safety and security is a continuous improvement kind of thing. I applaud the students for wanting to get involved. It takes everybody to be safe, everybody says, "Well, if you see something, say something." Some of the easy things that could be done, there are some easy things to be done, some more difficult things to be done, but the first thing, the shooter down in Florida, he melded in with the student population. And I know that we have student IDs that are in varying degrees of display at our schools. So, one of the easiest things that we can do is to make sure that every student is identified with the ID that's issued by the school district, and enforce that and be, that be on display. That should be something that the students should self-enforce. If they're interested in, they want to help, that's something that can be done. The second thing is with, that's easy, and it's not, it doesn't cost a whole lot of money, is to have an instant and real-time manifest of all the administrators and teachers in every building. That hardware, I believe, is there, or most of it is there, and administrators and teachers go from building to building, not all, but several of them report to several buildings throughout their work week. My business has a system called Switchboard, and for security, because we deal with sensitive government information as well, but it also keeps a real-time manifest of who's in what building, and when they were there and when they were left, when they left. And that, if there's an incident in a building, to have a real-time manifest is a very key piece of information and one of the first things that law enforcement will ask for about who's in the building and what do you know. So, that's something, another easy thing, doesn't cost a lot of money, but it's a continuous improvement kind of thing. And I always like to say that, you know, these are easy things, and if, the easy things are difficult because of stupid reasons, the more difficult things are impossible to do because of even dumber reasons. So, these are two things, easy to do, no good reason in my mind, that they can't be enforced and done. That's safety and security. And I want to talk briefly about the budget. We, it's good to see that, you're seeing how much work goes into keeping increases at Act One. It's a very difficult thing to do. Back in January, I had conversations with several board members, and I said, "You're going to look for a 4.2% tax increase before we ever saw preliminary budget." And in my work, I work with models, financial models, and I played around one with the school budget and used it as, put the algorithm to work this week, this past year, and just, that's what it says. I wasn't too far off, I was a little bit further off because healthcare, you know, healthcare increase was a little bit bigger than what I thought. So, right now, you're looking at about a 4.2% increase. In my opinion, you have about a million and two to find. And it's very easy for me to stand here and say, "Well, it's there, so you got to go find it." I don't know that it's there, I know some of it's there, but the impact on the community, that extra 1%, makes the difference between some people being able to keep their house, not keep their house, take their full prescription of medicines, whatever, especially the senior citizens. And 32% of the families in this district are on free or reduced lunch and are at low income. That means mom and dad are already having a tough time, they paying the rent or paying the mortgage. Two-thirds of the community don't have children in the schools. You've heard all this before, I heard it all before. So, the optics are, the mean household income is about $60,000 a year, that's the household income. We're fortunate enough to have teachers that their income averages $90,000 a year for 190 to 94-day work year, and superlative benefits that just went up this year, if the first look holds, about $2,000 ahead. So, we, including myself, have raised taxes for 30 years, fully understanding that the situation requires some increase. I understand that. I'm in a situation where I'm blessed and I can afford it, but the time's going to come when I'm going to retire, and I'm going to be in a situation where it could get painful for me as well. So, many people are on fixed incomes, and when the next tax increase hits, or maybe the next, the tax increase after that, will make some painful decisions, whether it's to sell their house and to go into a less independent living situation. As one of the discussions I had with a family member of ours, this was several years ago, but it's, you're in the painful throes of trying to limit tax increases to Act One. We committed to that. We committed to that early, and I know that Dr. Harner and I, we had some very spirited discussions, but that was the hard target, and that's what we limited it to, and that's undisputable. We held it to that. And there were some discussions about assessments and appreciation, and assessments are not really in the purview of this board, that's the county. So, those are the rules you got to live with, so you got to find it. And appreciation, the value of a house is zero unless it's for sale. So, if somebody has a half a million dollars' worth of equity, that does them absolutely no good to pay your tax bill or our tax bill. So, unless it's, you know, the point that we should dig into our equity to pay the tax bill, which is silly. I'm glad that we're in a position, that I'm in a position where I can pay, you know, the extra 1%. There are those who cannot pay that extra 1%. They're barely making ends meet now, and usually those are the senior citizens, they've been here for a long time, and they're making painful choices to lose their independence or have, having, losing a home, and losing a home and their independence. When raising taxes, I always wondered, one of the things that I always wondered, was how many people were not going to be able to afford this? And how many people would need to cut food or medicines or heat? And I literally lost sleep over it. So, that's why I was so motivated and made it such a hard target to keep the tax increases at Act One. Last year was 2.9%, I believe, our last. The extra 1% makes a difference, and it's not that, it's not that it's a difficult 1%, not a difficult 1% to find, it is difficult, it's painful. So, I wish you good luck, I thank you for your service, and I appreciate your time. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Schumer.
I live at 311 West Pale Town Road, that's in Richland Township. I also work for the school district. I'm your lunch lady, I feed your children. Hi, my name is Susan Polton, and I'm a proud food service worker for the Quakertown Community School District. This is my 13th school year working at the high school. I started when my son was in kindergarten, he will be graduating this year. I'd like to speak to you tonight about continuing with Chartwells as the food service managing company for the district. Chartwells does a great job managing us. They treat us workers fairly, and they appreciate us, they really appreciate the hard work that we do. But most importantly, they really care about the kids. The time that they have spent here in Quakertown has shown all of us lunch ladies just how much they care about these kids. I don't think another company coming in here is going to care about the kids as much as they do. The district manager of food service, Mr. Pete Kelly, is a really good leader. He sets a great example by being right there with us in the kitchen. If a school is shorthanded, he's there pitching right in, and a lot of schools, a lot of times, are shorthanded, a lot of times. When it comes to the high school, he's in the dishroom doing dishes, he's out on the lines serving food, he's cleaning up things and making sure that everything is just right for the kids. Are any of these other food service directors going to do that? Even when the Quakertown managed the food service department, she was never down here, down with the kids, she was always at the district office. They're right there. Chartwells has rolled with every change that the district has given them. You've got a good thing going with Chartwells, why stop a good thing? Don't change companies just because one is cheaper. Cheaper is not always better. Go with something that is tried and true and works. They care about the people who work in their schools, and they care about the kids. I'm here only speaking for myself, I'm not a spokesperson for the rest of the district lunch ladies, but I think that they would agree with me that we want Chartwells to stay. We're the ones who will have to suffer and change if you change the companies. Let's keep the formula that works, and that formula is Chartwells. Thank you.
Ms. Polton, sorry, I'm sure everybody else has an opinion as I do, but I love Pete. We love Chartwells. I mean, they're doing an amazing job. I hear nothing but great reviews, aside from an occasional comment about Pop-Tarts and things like that.
I'm still firm on that.
There you go. I believe the contract is almost up, and they're required?
I'd like to explain, we are required by state law to announce, put out RFPs, and have Chartwells and any other company compete for the contract at this particular point, that's what's going on. This past week, within the last couple of days, the Chartwells and other companies that have an interest in taking over the contract have walked around the building.
That was this past Monday, I think.
That's probably why, brought that to mind, but for the good of the audience, those who may watch this video, it's because we're required by law to do that. From the superintendent's perspective, obviously, from the nods you receive from the board, their service, Pete's service, your work with them, and I would like to say that on her day off, she goes up with high school choir kids to New York City to chaperone. So, she's more than just a lunch lady, she's bought in hook, line, and sinker to our school family, so thank you very much, and I wanted to call you out on that one before we move on.
The other piece to that puzzle, I want to ask our solicitor, I understand what you're saying about, you know, cheaper is not necessarily better, and I think I would agree with that, especially with Chartwells as concerned. However, this being a public entity and a public bidding process, I believe we're required to give the contract to the lowest responsible bidder, we may not have a choice, and I'll ask our.
Not necessarily. You can review quality of service and all the other things when you make that decision. It's not strictly a dollars and cents decision. You have parameters which you can act within that I just mentioned.
I would certainly hope that it is not a dollar and cents thing, because you're all about the kids and the kids and the community, and, you know, going for the lowest bid is not always the wisest choice.
The only Chartwell complaints I've had.
The only Chartwell complaints I've had have been from people complaining about everything. So, you know, I haven't, I haven't really taken them to heart. But the feedback in general has been that they get the job done above and beyond.
And that is with, you know, people changing, changing things for Chartwells who have no idea of the phenomenal amount of work and professionalism that it takes to do large volume batch cooking. So, anything else? Thank you.
It really does.
All of us are very devoted.
So, maybe if you know some of the right people, you could see what you can do about getting those Pop-Tarts in there three days a week instead of.
They're never going to let it go with the Pop-Tarts. They're never going to.
I've missed the Pop-Tart.
It was, so I was joking about this because it got on my nerves. Now, they're going to make me tell the whole story. So, I'm looking on my lunch bill for my son and I'm like, Pop-Tart? Pop-Tart? Like, he's eating Pop-Tarts for lunch? What is going on, you know?
The whole week.
They only have them every few days or something, right? So, apparently, he gets them whenever he possibly can. Which, by the way, you can say what your kid can't and can't have. But I was just like, why are we serving Pop-Tarts? So, now they all give me a hard time. That's where that came from.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
But then I found out they were whole grains. So, then that made me feel lots better, right?
Okay, that's everyone that signed up for public comment. Is there anybody else that has any public comment at this time? Please state your name and area of residence.
You don't have to apologize at this point. Hi, Chris Spear, Milford Township. It was actually, I didn't plan on saying anything tonight either, but Mr. Shermer gave me an idea that actually I was thinking of a while ago. And I'm not advocating for any tax increase. Believe me, I don't want, I want you to find that $1.2 million and stick to the Act One or even go below the Act One. I personally think that the taxing system is unfair, that it taxes property the whole time. I know in the past, and I tried to look up exactly when it was and I couldn't find it, but the school board has issued an earned income tax increase in the past. So, if that money can't be made up, is it possible to, to tack on a half percent on the earned income tax?
There's a statutory limit to earned income tax.
Is it, are we at?
A half percent.
Well, so a half percent on an earned income tax, there's probably way more working people than there are homeowners in this community. So, a half percent on an earned income tax would probably amount to a 1.5% property tax. That only really taxes the working people and not the people on fixed incomes. Well, not all of the people on fixed incomes, but the retired people that are living in their thing.
A half a percent assumes that the local municipality takes the other half a percent.
Then it's a quarter percent.
No, no. The overall cap is 1%.
Oh, okay.
And if the borough and the school district both had an earned income tax, they both get half.
I believe Milford's taking that 1% too.
Milford, we have, I don't remember. We don't have an earned income tax, do we?
I was thinking Richland takes 1%.
Well, if you don't have one, then the township can take, or the borough can take the whole 1%.
Yeah.
How does this decision get made? Does anybody know? I'm not familiar with it. Anybody know any more about this?
Yeah, that's, I was just going to say, maybe it's an option and maybe it's a.
What I believe is that Milford, we already are at the cap. At least, I don't know about the other townships in the district, but Milford takes its 1%, which is the most that it can charge. And it gives that half percent to the district and keeps half for its municipal operations. That's my.
But just Milford? Wouldn't the whole school district have to?
Well, it would be each township within the district that does it. So, there's, you know, there'd be Milford, Richland, Quakertown. And I don't know actually about the other ones. I know that Milford's 1%.
The individual township decision?
Each township, each township has its own.
Richland is at 1.5% because they had a referendum to raise it so that they could get money for open space.
And the other reason why I brought this up is since there was a federal tax cut, we can sort of move into some of that area anyway on income tax. And it would sort of not be nearly as painful.
I think without a referendum, we're there. Is that correct, Mr. Harner?
Anyway, the referendum, you're not going to buy any open space. So, I think the referendum is there for that purpose, not for schools that can raise money. You're limited to a half a percent. Unless the local municipality doesn't have it, then you can get a whole percent.
Philosophically, I agree with you because the earned income generally takes people during transactional years, you know. And I think the majority of tax collection in general should be on transactions, not equity, you know. You know, we have people, we have people in the district who, in the 50s and 60s, they did everything right. They planned accordingly. You know, they, they paid their mortgage payment for 30 years. They set aside a little bit for pension. They did everything right. And, you know, they come up into the 1990s, retired, their house is paid for. Maybe in that 30 years, they never paid more than $275 or $300 in a house payment, but then they get reassessed in 2000. And now, you know, that we have one person who visits us often and speaks. And I actually looked up on Zillow just to see what her property taxes were and they're $4,700 a year for a house that, you know, she paid $30,000 for some time ago. And on her fixed income, which I guess is, you know, some couple thousand or so a month, which back in the time of planning would have been enough, you know, it's more than her house payment ever was. So, when she comes in and says that her house is being held for ransom, you know, there's some legitimacy to that. And then, so the argument people give me sometimes is they say, well, the house is appreciated, it's accumulated value and she's benefited from, from that. But she can't live in her house value, you know. And she wants to die in a house she's lived in for 60 years. So, I'm very sympathetic to, you know, that perspective, which is why I, like Mr. Shermer, take the hard line on the Act One index, you know. And so, what I'm hoping is that during this course of the budget cycle, we will get down there. I'm going to work very hard to do that. But philosophically, during those child age-rearing years, you know, whether you have children or not, it is a social good to provide an education. The founding fathers thought so, continues to. But I philosophically agree that instead of property, earned income tax would be much messier for the board, but it would be more sensible for the, you know, the population at large. But we have to see what Harrisburg's going to do on that because they're working on something like you're talking about right now. It failed last year. It's going to come up again next year, I think. It's not on the ballot this year, is it? The EIT, yeah. So, it failed last year narrowly. And at some point, there's probably going to be a combination of earned income tax and sales tax, you know, transactional taxes that address your concern. And that might be the right thing to do because it doesn't punish the elderly. But it's still very complicated. And either way, we're subjects to whatever comes down from Harrisburg. But right now, even though you're thinking the right way, we are legislatively limited right there. We're at the cap right now for the townships.
Something for the board to consider as well. And again, I'm all about paying attention to what we already have in front of us. The budgetary reports, the reports tab on the website. I'm looking at the revenue drivers tab, letter O, on your attachments. I don't know the percentage of municipalities that it's generated by, but there's an earned income tax line item in that, that slide. And the budgetary line item for 2018-19 currently stands as we're projecting to raise $11 million from earned income tax. So, in some form, it already exists.
Well, it would be, why I brought it up was if it would be possible, like I said, a half percent earned income tax increase would probably equal maybe a 2% property tax increase.
Right, but again, but again, we're already, obviously.
If we are at the cap.
But the solicitors already, you know, that there's, a half percent is the maximum we're going to get. We have to get some fraction thereof if we're getting money already. And again, I.
I'm going to go out on a limb and assume that each township is collecting the max as they can.
All right. Well, then I'll go sit back down. But I just wanted to bring it up because I thought it may help, at least when trying to figure out where to find money.
As always, thank you, Mr. Spears.
Any other comments?
That's called finding money by.
That was finding money by reaching into the pockets of our taxpayers.
But maybe you can get a 0% tax increase if you can get some earned income tax.
Okay.
Okay, any other public comment at this time? Okay. Let's move on to the superintendent report. Dr. Harner.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Just wanted to take a moment to talk about our incident that, or the early release that we had on last Friday that.
What happened?
On last Friday due to weather, the weather we weren't expecting. And I just wanted to see if you had any further comments from the email. Just for the good of the audience, on Monday afternoon, we had an after-action review with the cabinet team. I asked all the principals to provide feedback, all the, our admin team to provide feedback into us. And we've had a very good discussion. Probably the, not probably, after the time when the tech school buses were about 45 minutes late, if you recall, the early release was to begin at 12:45. The weather came in, very first weather report from the county, emergency services came in at 2 minutes to 11. Shortly thereafter, I was talking with this shortly, we're talking just a couple of minutes thereafter, I was talking to the superintendents from Palisades and Pen Ridge. We made a decision about 20 after 11 to all send our students home. And our dismissal was 12:45, 1:45, 2:45 versus the normal release time of 2:10, 3 o'clock and 4 o'clock. So, right before 4:00. Anyway, needless to say, the buses from tech school were already out because of the jackknife 18-wheeler on 313 and all that. The buses didn't get in 45 minutes later. And that was, right then and there, I should have made it, turned it into to a critical incident situation where we stood up the, our command center up here at the district office and do that. Needless to say, no one got hurt. We had one bus that slipped off the road. That was bus number 740, the infamous 740 because we're tracking it. We're 740. But we also found that we didn't have, like a lot of other bus companies, they have GPS, they have multiple means of communications with their buses. And that was one of the shortfalls that we know we had. Also, when the message went out to our community, and I got the feedback back from a couple of parents, that when we sent out an early release or we have a two-hour delay or no school at all, I'd send it out by three means of communications. And it's by parent asking to be notified through our ConnectEd system. It's by voice, by email, by text messaging. I send out all three, like I did this week. On Friday, I was down in the high school participating in a meeting that got disrupted first before the weather message went out by the power going out at the high school because of the storm. And generators kicked on at all our buildings, or most of our buildings. Anyway, when I had sent out the message, it did not have voice nor text. And that really stumped a few folks. But that was, it was an error on my part. But got the message out, everyone got home safely. And you've seen some of the emails. I've received several very nice emails about a whole bunch of things from the teachers, the staff members, principals, what they did in the buildings. Obviously, everyone saw the article I sent to you that Gary wrote about the drivers. We hosted a breakfast for them. They were heroes. They were definitely heroes. You see these, the driver's been doing it for a long time. They come, they pull up the strayer. I was going out there in the winds and asking them, how roads? What can you tell me? And all that kind of stuff. And they're already three hours behind. And they're just terrified. But they did such a great job. And what was really neat, yesterday at breakfast that we had at Trump Bowersville, that was the first time they were all together. So, they're all swapping stories. So, it was, it was a healthy activity. But we've, we spent a good bit of time talking about what we did wrong or what we could have done better, better way to put it, and how we're going to improve it. It should have been turned into a critical incident, given the weather conditions. And that would have taken in a lot more things because we had people leaving our buildings when we still had 50% of our students. Can't have our adults leaving when our students are still there. And so, and we'll go through that and talk with Ryan about that. And I think, I thought I saw Jan come in here tonight. Jan, talk to Jan about it too, our president of Cuespa. So, everyone overall, we did a marvelous job, but we found some glitches there.
Couple of questions real quick about the buses. It's my understanding that having GPS and two-way communication is standard from other bus companies. And I understand that the bus drivers for Levy use their own personal phones versus.
They are offered a district phone or a Levy phone or they have their own, and most have their own.
Isn't it incumbent upon the bus company to be currently equipped?
But I asked Bo, Joe, excuse me, Joe, Joe to reach out to some of the other, to all the other districts. And I had Zach doing that across the business manager line. Could you give them a little rundown what you found?
Yeah, so the, some of the surrounding districts in South Bus or North Bus that have their own fleet of buses all have some form of two-way communication, whether it's two-way radios or CB or even a GPS tracking system. I also reached out to some fleet GPS companies that provide the actual hardware to track buses and, you know, commented when I said our buses currently aren't equipped. We're 2018, that's unheard of.
Yeah, so, I mean.
And a lot of them have a parent-facing feature so a parent can actually, you know, know where their child is.
Yeah, one thing I'd like to see us do, and if everyone on the board agrees also, is ask them, you know, if they have plans of doing that, making the, you know, with the technology the way it is, you know. When we were kids, none of that, this stuff was unheard of. You know, we'd one phone in the house. Sometimes people shared a phone. But now with this technology and people's constant yearning for it, I think it's appropriate that we ask them what their plans are to do to become more 2018. Everyone's pretty much on.
I'm on board with that.
I'm actually shocked.
Yeah, I mean, and that's, that's.
It's hard to hear that they.
Yeah, and that's their expense, not ours.
In the bus. Or that they're using a personal cell phone.
And I hear nothing. I hear, I hear nothing but terrific things about the bus drivers. You know, from kids that ever, most every kid loves their bus driver, you know, because they're terrific. But this isn't about the drivers. It's about equipping them to be prepared for such a thing. And then some parents, they just, they like to track their kids' bus so they know exactly when to meet them at the corner or wherever. So, it'd be, that's something that they really ought to look into doing for us as, you know, their primary client.
Well, we'll follow up with all those things. And you saw my, I filed on a copy of my AAR comments, all the most significant things that we needed to work on behind the scenes.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Next thing is about the Pearl Buck International. As you know, on the 24th, when we have our retreat, the Laura Womax from Pearl Buck will be in working with you. Ms. Weed, still need you to get.
No, I filled it out. I filled it out. I filled it out three nights ago, Dr. Harner.
Okay, my report was on Monday, so.
I'm sorry.
Okay, I had to call you out.
I know. I deserved it, but it's done.
Still looking at about 50%, 51% in from the faculty out there, or about 72% of administrative team. Everyone's going to have the opportunity to have training and just putting a plug in for that. And I'm going to be sending out notices to all the principals with those who hadn't turned in their assessments because in a few weeks, over the next couple of months, all the staff and faculty and our faculties in the buildings.
How long ago they go out?
Sir?
The assessments, how long ago do they go out? It's a couple of months, right?
Years and hours, the administrative team went out in the middle of January and beginning of February, end of January is when they went out to teachers.
All right, so, I mean, it's been over a month. They should, they should need to be filled out.
Well, yes, sir. Okay, next thing is, and my last thing, last thing for tonight, and hopefully we can keep you all informed. This is about the ESSA, the new federal law and the state's implementation plan. I asked Dr. Hoffman to provide you a short presentation on what it is for Pennsylvania. And it's already been approved, so we need to get the word out on what is, what is its impact on Quakertown students and our work.
And what acronym, did this acronym replace?
Well, it sort of replaced No Child Left Behind. That's the, I mean, not exactly, but that's probably the closest acronym. So, just to give you a couple of updates about what's been going on. The Senate Education Committee had their first hearing about what PA wanted to do for the ESSA plan on January 2nd. And then it was approved on January 16th. So, we have only known about the updated information since about. So we have only known about the updated information since about the end of January, and the information has been coming out very slowly from Pennsylvania. So I have some updates and key points, but literally every week, we're getting new information about what this means for us. So some of the questions that are on here that you may have, I may not know the answer to, but I will certainly try to get an answer as we go along. So, the Every Student Succeeds Act is a federal mandate, federal rule, and there are four areas that they are looking at in terms of how they're going to judge school districts and what we're doing. It's the basic proficiency that we've had for a while, which is looking at how students are doing on the PSSA, the PASTA test, which is for students with diagnosable disabilities, and also the Keystone exams. So that still remains the same. Then they are going to add in academic progress for students, where they're looking at what we use for academic growth is our PVAS, which is Pennsylvania Value Added Assessment System. Actually, just had a conversation the other day with Ryan Weand about how, as much as they are talking about wanting to have growth be a part of this, Pennsylvania is only choosing to use PVAS, which only affects a small portion of our teachers. You have to teach in the same tested subject area for three years to get this score, so it really doesn't appear to account for the growth of all students. But nevertheless, that's what Pennsylvania has chosen for academic progress. The third category is the graduation rate. Pennsylvania has sought to be able to use either the four-year graduation cohort rate, or the average of the four- and five-year cohort rate, which in our case doesn't make much of a difference, because we don't have, we have a pretty high graduation rate for our four-year cohort. But for some districts, especially city districts, the inclusion of being able to see how many students can finish in five years could make a difference for them. And then the fourth indicator is how English learners are doing. You may remember that a couple of months ago, I had our team voluntarily go through a program quality review of how we were doing with our English learners in the districts. We utilized the Bucks County IU to come in and do a three-day audit of our information, and so that is leading towards knowing that this was going to come up as an area that we were going to be assessed in. So they will be looking at how our students are growing on their access tests, which is another state assessment that our students who are English learners need to take. So those are the four that are required under ESSA. Pennsylvania, because they like to sometimes change a little bit, decided to add two additional indicators that we need to pay attention to. So the first is a career readiness benchmark, and I'll talk to you a little bit about this in a few slides, but the idea behind it, I think, is a good one. It is to make sure that all of our students have that college and career-ready background, which we are already doing here in Quakertown. But the trouble that a lot of our, my colleagues and I are having right now is that this is another unfunded mandate. We are now required to have every student have a portfolio with 12 pieces of evidence over their time in school that we need to provide on a variety of indicators. So each year, the children of the school district will be doing two activities that we need to build into the curriculum somehow, and then they need to provide reflections on those, and keep them all in a portfolio that can be available to anyone from PDE at any time, should they come to visit us. So we are working on what that looks like here, how we can track it, just the management of it. But we do feel very confident, my team has worked very hard on making sure that we have the actual learning in place. So right now, we're confident that we have the lessons in place, and that we can have this be meaningful for our students, because I certainly don't want to just add things in that don't help them towards their college and career readiness goals. So we have the lessons in place, we now just need to find out how to track them. And then the second component that Pennsylvania has added is a chronic absenteeism flag, and this is looking at the percentage of students who miss more than 10% of their school days. So if you're in for a typical 180-day, that would be 18 days. Now, most of us would say, we hope that our students don't miss 18 days of school. And we've always looked at absenteeism as students who have missed unlawfully, so they don't bring in a note, or they're just not coming to school for some reason. The difference with the chronic absenteeism that really needs to, that we really need to get out there, is that in this case, it is all absences from school, except for field trips. So a field trip, they are judging, is an academic, you know, experience, and that can count as a day. But these 18 days include doctor's notes, they include college visits, they include out-of-school suspensions, so you can see that that can pretty quickly add up for a number of students to get to that 18. So the biggest impact on our students so far that we've established is that they are telling us that they are going to reduce the PSSA testing window, so that's students in grades three through eight, by about 20%. It's going to be a shorter window, and it's going to happen later in the year. That's about as much as we know. We don't know exactly what that's going to amount to, but that's what they have promised us for next year.
Dr. Hoffman?
Yes.
If it happens later in the year, is that a benefit to us?
It's a benefit to the students in terms, and to the teachers, I believe, and that they are able to cover more material before the test. But they haven't really explained what the turnaround will look like. So right now, we don't get scores back until sometimes mid-July, and so thinking about how we could do any planning with that information if we didn't get it until, let's say, August, would certainly be a factor. Now, hopefully, with the reduction in test items, they would be able to score them quickly, but we don't actually know that yet.
Sure, the state of Pennsylvania will gain many efficiencies here.
I will, I will eagerly await that from them.
Reduction of the testing time, that will also be met with a reduction in the amount of questions, I presume?
Yes, so in most areas, there are going to be fewer open-ended items and fewer multiple choice items, but that's just an average. So in some grade levels, in some tests, there might still be, you know, four open-ended assessments, but on average, it will equate to about 20% less testing. We also have the instruction of the career readiness portfolio, which I shared with you. We have a K to three grade band, so somewhere between kindergarten and third grade, you need to have two pieces of evidence, and then for every grade through grade 11, you need to have two more. So then they would end up at the end of their time with this nice portfolio. And then we have the focus on chronic absenteeism.
Quick question about the portfolio. What is your professional opinion? Do you feel like it's helpful, or is it just another one of those things to check off the list?
So I can say that I feel that the coursework that we've put into place is beneficial. So everywhere that we could find a place to either use something we were already doing, we took a really good look at our curriculum in any of these areas, and for instance, there's a look at, in the early grade bands, they want students to look at what careers they might want to do, and that's something we already do in our third-grade social studies unit. So we just, you know, moved that over to be one of these tasks. We talked a lot about how we have a good portion of our students who go to visit the technical school. So in conversation with Penridge and Palisades and the Tech School, we are going to work on having all of our students visit the technical school in eighth grade, write a reflection on that. Some students may choose to go there, some may not, but at least everyone would have that experience, and that can count as a piece of it. So I feel, I feel good about that piece of it. I'm not sure that the way in which it needs to be tracked has been thoroughly thought through.
The, this starts next school year, right?
No, this starts this year. It needs to be in place somehow by June.
The portfolio is an actual physical portfolio, like my daughter's folders?
Right, so I'm trying to do this digitally, because I think that's the most manageable way.
Yeah, I was going to ask you about storage, and from year to year, and you know what it's like when we lose a patient's file?
Yes.
Or when the EHR goes down, so it went from, you know, one thing to another. So they have a physical something they have to carry from kindergarten all the way through graduation. The state can come and say, I'd like to see your papers?
Right, so without getting too into it, I'm looking at a Google Drive situation. We've been working with Mr. Cuso and Chad Evans in my office to come up with basically a Google Doc that has a template that is shared with the building principal, the teacher, you know, from year to year, it moves along, and the students, if it's a physical piece of paper, they can take a picture of it and upload it, or they can write their reflection right on there, and then that would just stay. If we ever needed to print it, we could, but we would be able to pull up any students at any time.
Now, what if it were something like a, like a project to craft a piece of art, something that was built at the Tech School? Is that something you just document what they did and?
Right, ideally, we would have them take a picture of it, which a lot of the elementary teachers are doing for their Canvas portfolios right now. They have the students just take a picture of it, or do an audio recording of what they've done. So we've seen some success with that, and I think we'd like to use it for that as well, but we're still working through what that looks like.
Thank you.
I have a question. If the PSSAs are put later in the year, does that mean they're going to be spending more time with PSSA practice before they take the test?
Well, as you know, I've said before, Mr. Anderson, I don't believe that most of our classrooms are doing PSSA practice anymore. We don't, you know, advocate for the purchase of those books anymore, or to spend the time on that, but I would certainly hope that it would provide them with more time to cover the curriculum, so that they can do it on the test, but.
Dr. Hoffman?
Yes.
What hammer is out there if we decide we don't like X, Y, and Z, and don't do it?
Well, as a commissioned officer of the state, I would not suggest that we don't do what we're asked to do.
Okay, but we could suggest that.
I think that, I think that there are certainly districts that may not follow this, you know, the exact way right away, because it's going to be very difficult to implement. You know, we just found out about this, there's probably a lot of teachers that don't know that this is coming, and we have to have two pieces of evidence for every kid by June. So, you know, like, it was-
Or else?
It was hard. Or else we don't do it. Or else we check no on the PIMS report that gets submitted in June.
And they take money away, they come and-
I mean, in theory, anytime-
They take our children away from us?
Well, hopefully not. In theory, anytime that we are reporting that we are not doing something on a state report, there could be-
Accreditation, like they could say, we're not qualified to teach our children. I mean, I'm serious, right?
I don't know what they would do, I just know what we're asked to do. So I don't know if anybody else has an opinion on what would happen if we didn't follow mandates.
They'd probably make us do more corrective action plans.
Yes, and I would prefer not to do a corrective action plan. And you would probably prefer not for me to stand up here and present the corrective action plan, so we'll try and move on past that.
We can write a program to just generate them on the fly, you know, with random Latin.
Okay.
So I just want to say thank you for being so proactive as to try and find a way to store these digitally, rather than us having to worry about that later on.
Thank you.
Here, here.
Okay, so we also have a new opt-out provision, which is very important for the public to understand. Of course, through Chapter 4, it is any parent's right to opt their child out of state testing for a religious reason. There are rules that they need to follow in terms of coming in and reviewing the test, and if they do have a religious objection, they can opt out, so we are not taking that right away from anyone, certainly.
It's only religious? They're only allowed to do certified?
The only opt-out religion, yes, it's the only opt-out. So any parent who opts their child out is actually certifying that it's because of a religious reason.
If we can convince the entire community to opt out for some religious reason, would we not have to follow any state mandates?
No, actually, then we would be 100% in corrective action and could risk state takeover of our school district, so I would not advise that. But for these purposes, which is new under this rule, if we do not have 95% participation, so if 5% of our students opt out, now they have not shared whether that is by building or by district, so that's a question that we have into the state, but if, right now, they're saying 95%, if we have any student above that 5% that doesn't take the test, is automatically designated as not proficient. So if we do have larger than 5% in terms of opt-out, that could have a significant effect on our, on our state test scores.
Wait a minute, we can't control that?
That's-
That's the new option.
Right, we can't control it, that's accurate, but I would like for people to know that while it is within their right to opt out, this is the effect.
One thing I know we often say is like, oh, this is a state thing, or this is a county thing, or something like that, but I think that we as a board should proactively, you know, be communicating with the state on these matters, on how we feel about them. I mean-
Talk yourself out.
Well, that's how, that's how change happens, right? Is like, you have support of a group of leaders who are, you know, lobbying or whatnot, that we don't feel this is effective because of X, Y, and Z. Do we have anything organized in that way, that we're communicating on a regular basis with our legislators?
I had breakfast with Senator Mench on Friday, how's that? And we talked about school safety, we didn't talk about the opt-out, but we talked about other things, everything to do with education.
Realistically, how many people would opt out? I mean, traditionally, where do we?
So we, we could get close to the 5% for sure. I mean, and there are certainly neighboring districts who have been more proactive in allowing people to opt out, that are going to have a bigger struggle with this, they are well above the 5%. It's going to matter for us whether this is by building or by district, for sure, because there are some buildings that have had traditionally higher opt-out rates.
Basically, what it does is it hurts the grade the district gets for, because each student-
The building and the grade, and then the district.
Yeah, so basically, you just start statistically adding a zero for each per capita-
That's correct.
And what it does, it just brings our total overall average down, and makes us look bad, but less proficient than would actually be the case.
That's correct.
Okay. But that first 95%, like, that's the number, so you get five, up to 5% without a penalty in the scoring.
Well, those 5% are still, you still get penalized, but in a different box. You get penalized for nonparticipation. You don't get penalized for scores. Now, this is like a double-
That doesn't hurt the actual score average.
That's correct.
Alright, okay, and, you know, I'm just trying to figure out mathematically how the weighting would go per each student in it, you know, like in college, when you have, you know, you get a C, and it's your only C in the year, and it takes you two years of As to make up for it. I'm just curious what the impact would be for any student that went over that. So I guess it's incumbent on us to get the message out to the community that we need participation from the families in this.
Right, I would say the families who don't fall under the Chapter 4 exemption for the religious reason, certainly that's their right, that we would want them to be taking a test, yes.
Forgive me for my ignorance, religious exemption to, from taking a test?
Yes, so-
I don't understand.
It's in the Bible.
Couldn't you just sit here, any religion, and just say?
So what, what has to happen is that the parent needs to come in and view the test, and then they need to state that there is some material in that test that they have a religious objection to. They don't have to tell us what it is, so we don't have, they don't have to write what the religion is, they don't have to write what they object to, they just need to view the test and acknowledge that they have a religious exemption.
So a possible biology question, for example, could trigger somebody to not want their kid to take that test, or it says they're-
I'm pretty sure that's not really why they do it, though.
Yes.
I just, I'm just trying to, and then you said you're close to the 5%, and I couldn't, I couldn't fathom somebody coming in and saying, this, you know, this test is against my religion. And for, I don't mean to offend anybody, for the record, but-
I'm pretty sure they are doing it because they don't believe in the nature of the testing, is my guess.
We do have a small segment of the community that's anti-common core, anti-assessment, anti, and they share their views with the board, and when we get into the testing windows shortly, you'll all be receiving those emails.
I guess it's a religion. Thank you for answering my question.
By the way, Dr. Hoffman, I assume Quaker schools, faith Christian, like, they don't have to comply with this?
That's correct.
Nice.
And just, Mr. Alkmanowicz, this is a lack of alignment between the state and the federal system. The federal guidelines requires the 95% and half below that, but the state had, has not made, followed up and changed their previous law that says parents can opt out.
It's simply opt-out, so it has to be a religion.
No, that, opt-out for religion, but there are other states that don't have an opt-out clause, like Pennsylvania does, so this, the federal part of meeting the 95% shouldn't be as difficult for them. Now, I also want to say that 95% participation can include students who have a concussion and are unable to test, or some other medical reason, extended absence from school, all of those are reasons to not test that would go towards that 5%.
The test needs to be done within certain-
Within the window, that's correct. So, beginning in the fall, we are going to have a little bit of a shift of the way that these things are reported. So we have the ESSA Accountability for School Improvement, which is a subset of this Future Ready PA Index, which we don't have yet, so I can't share with you exactly what that looks like. But that will be the public-facing kind of progress report for the schools, on how we're doing on a variety of these topics. However, in Pennsylvania, Teacher Evaluation, or ACT 82, actually requires that the school district use the building's SPP score, the School Performance Profile. So even though in Pennsylvania, they decided to move to the ESSA report card, we still have to have an SPP score in order to evaluate the teachers. So we're going to have both. However, the public will not see the Educator Evaluation SPP score. They're going to deactivate that site that's out there now at the end of this year, and it will just be sent privately to the school districts, and then the public will only see that PA Future Ready Index report card. So when we get a copy of that, I'll share it with you. So as I said, for the state assessment measures, we have how students are doing on the test we have how students are doing on the test. So, if they are proficient or advanced on PSSA Keystone or the, or the PASA, then we get those points adjusted for the participation rate. We have the annual growth. They're only going to be looking at P-VAS. And now they have a third measure, which is the students who score advanced on PSSA in Keystone. So, they're gonna be counted twice if they're in that bucket. And the reasoning behind that, at least what's coming out from the state, is that they feel that a number of students are reaching proficiency, and then they're not being pushed to reach to that next level. So, now they're going to also look at the number of students who are reaching advanced. We have the English learner proficiency, as they're doing on the access test, and then the chronic absenteeism, which I already explained. Now, even though they've reduced our testing, they added a new measure for grade three reading and grade seven math. This is called early indicators of success. They have identified that these are two grade levels where kind of a make-or-break point. So, they are looking at the number of students who are demonstrating on-track performance in grade three reading and grade seven math. They are allowing school districts to determine what measure they would like to use for this, but they are really asking people to use CDT, which is their product. In the past, we have not used CDT as a measure in this way. We've used it as more for teachers to give their students, to see what their progress is, to help, you know, work with them along the year, more as a formative type of assessment. So, we are going to have to consider how we can make that shift to using that now as a, as a summative measure and have it count as this. CDT is a DRC product. It is through PDE. It's, it doesn't cost us anything.
Those are, those are still acronyms.
I know. I'm sorry. Data Recognition Corporation, who, who we get the, the Keystone's and the PSSA from, which I don't like to say it doesn't cost us anything, because, of course, we know there's a cost to everything. But the school district doesn't actually pay for those tests, and they don't pay for the use of CDT. Yes, that's why I tried to say, we, so, using the CDT won't cost the, it's a classroom diagnostic test.
So, it is a test?
It is a test. But it was supposed to be diagnostic. It's in the name of it. But, so, that's, that's another measure now that we'll be doing for the students in grade three. So...
Just using classroom grades won't...
No, not in a, it has to have validity measures. It has to have cut scores. It has to be, you know, normed. So, it's not like we could come up with this on our own. We have to use pretty much a product. And just to answer the question that I know is probably out there, if you are a seventh-grade student who is taking algebra, yes, you now have to take the Keystone, the PSSA, and this test. So, that was a question. Now, we have the career measures. They're looking at that graduation rate that I mentioned, the Career Standards Benchmark. And they've added industry-based learning, which is great for students who are at the technical school. They are looking for students to be proficient or advanced on, on the NOCTI, and that will count towards us. They are also looking at a measure for courses of rigor. So, they'll be looking at every student that takes an AP class. We don't have international backlorate here. Dual enrollment classes and students who score an advanced on the NOCTI. So, similar to the PSSA, getting an advanced will count twice for those students. And the last measure here, which I'm sure there will be questions about, but this is one that I don't have answers to, the last measure that they are looking for is after 16 months after graduation, they will be looking at the student, the percentage of students who have enrolled in an institution of higher learning, enlisted in the military, or who have entered the workforce. We, the question that was asked is how will we know that? How will we measure that? We don't have that answer right now, but that will be part of how we are measured.
I think a subdural RFID chip in the back of the head.
You could probably mention that. But, so, that is the fifth category. We just don't know exactly how that's going to be measured. Questions? Clear as mud?
I'd love to have any questions.
Okay.
Does it have to be subdural?
Is that the right term?
No, it sounded really good. It was really a great medical term.
Maybe the Levy Bus Company can work on the same GPS tractor.
There you go.
Okay, we can mention it. Okay?
I just have a question. When does the testing, so, when you, when you look at a school district, when you're assessed three or four, five different ways, are you then ranked in different forums or different ways against that test? In other words, you know, the Keystone, you get this type of ranking with it. I mean, we, we read rankings all the time. I say, "Where does Quakertown fall in here? We're on some charts. We're not on other ones." Is it because of this kind of thing?
Yeah, it certainly can be.
So, you could end up on maybe five different websites that have five different rankings and fall maybe first here and 10th here, and it really doesn't mean much, I guess. I don't know. I'm just trying to figure out where, I don't know.
Like, the SPP, the SPP site was kinda cool. I know when our one daughter is teaching at the girls' high, I could look it up and see how they scored and what the makeup of their student body is, and, you know, are they slackers? Or, you know, it's a pretty decent magnet school, and they could compare it against Quakertown and compare us against, you know, Central Bucks. So, I guess they're gonna take that site down, so.
But it'll be replaced with that future ready.
Yeah, so, it's kinda, I mean, it's, it's a measure. You know, I'm, I'm curious if our student representative would like to add anything to this discussion regarding testing and whatnot.
She's in armor.
No, I was just doodling the entire time. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Yeah.
Me too.
Now, in terms of testing, I feel like, I mean, there are some tests that are optional, obviously, like AP, and then there's some tests that are, like, mandatory. And I just feel like, in terms of like this, like, what the government's trying to do to us and, like, forcing all, like, these acronyms and, like, these various, like, bubble sheets down our throats, it's really unfair, and it doesn't really pay attention to what the students need. And we don't need more tests. I'm sorry, but it's true. We're tested way too much. And what you said about the seventh graders who are taking algebra and how they have to take the PSSA, the Keystone's, and that CDT thing, that's insane. I took algebra as a seventh grader, and I think I only had to take the Keystone, and that was rough as a seventh grader. It's a little too much, and I wish we could do something about it, but I guess it's up to the big people up there. So, yeah.
They know better.
Yeah, obviously.
Like, again, another area where I just feel like, where is our influence? How are leaders making those decisions, knowing how we feel about it? Just something to think about. I feel like we need to have a little bit more of a...
What is the feedback from your, your conversation with the legislators?
Minimal. Senator Mench is on the Appropriations Committee, and so, I, I talked to him about, a lot about school funding, and he's asked, and I, last academic year, I testified before his committee on his zero-based budgeting work. Senators, our House Representative Craig Stats is on the Education Committee, and, and right now, they, they have a meeting on school safety. So, he's, I asked him if I could, he announced it at one of his flyers, so I asked him if I could provide some insight from our perspective. So, those are the things that are up right now. When it comes to ESSA, the Legislature and the Department of Education Governor, because the governor controls the Department of Education, secretary is appointed by him, their senior staff is appointed by him, and they all work for the governor. So, it's the governor versus the legislature. So, ESSA is all about what the governor and his staff wanted for the policy. The Legislature asked to have to see all that. They had to pass a law that required the PDE to share that with them, and it, it still went forward without their final okay, or they, they provided their input, but they didn't, they didn't have their formal review. So, there's a lot of conflict there. You can see the, when the opt-out provision, you know, the, you know, the left hand is not working with the right hand. So, there, here's a lot of, there are a lot of challenges there. Ms. Mitchell, I, you know, I don't throw up my hands. I spend a lot of time, especially on, when it comes to financial policies and things that go on here. SB 76 property tax reform, the, because the Appropriations Committee, Senator Mench is very much involved in that. Representative Stats, I would give him credit. When we started doing the Alice work a couple years ago, I briefed him on it, and he, and I said, "Hey, there hasn't been a fire in a building where a student or, and anybody lost their life since the, since the 50s." But we were required to do fire drills every month. And we're, but we have a shooting, I read an article in The Economist, This Week's Economist, and there, there's at least one mass shooting every day in the United States, not schools.
Not schools, but somewhere.
But, but mass shootings everywhere.
Or more considered a mess.
And, and, and so, you know, but, but we're not required to have the drill. Well, he went, he took that to the Ed Committee. It came out of Ed Committee. It was, and now it's, we're allowed to have one swap-out a year. Now, our parent, parent groups have asked me to have more, so I've been turned, asked the principals to have, and I, hopefully, we've had one in, PAF, did PAF have one in the last couple of weeks, or is having one? You know, I've asked them all since the, the shooting, just to, was put this front and center, so everyone knows what we're, they're supposed to be doing. The next day, we had one in high school, and, which was rather interesting because of its timing, but it still was a good exercise.
Yeah, I was thinking about that, about the communication that you've given to the parents, which they much appreciate about, things like the property taxes. And I'm, I'm just thinking, Esther, I need to think about it a little bit more. But perhaps it would be good for us to have one page dedicated to all the different legislation that is impacting the school districts and helping, you know, parents to be able to know a clear path to where they would communicate with their legislators. Because I hate feeling like we're in a position where we're like, "Oh, it's the state's. Oh, it's this person's." It's like, let's give our community a voice and a clear path to do that, and not necessarily saying we have to tell them one way or another, depending on the issue. But I just feel they should be hearing from us about this, especially if we're hearing from our students that this testing is absolute craziness. You know, I just would like for us to be active in those conversations. So, I'll put some thought into that a little bit more.
Can you wait till the next public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it. Thank you, sir. Moving on now to our student representative report, and tonight's student representative is Anna Tran.
Okay, hi. So, for the past two weeks, we've had two major events at the high school, which was the blood drive, obviously, and a lot of students signed up, and then the Grid Iron Bowl last week, which is, if you know anything about Powderpuff, it's, in the fall, the girls basically create their own football teams, and there's a tournament. And this is the boys' version of it, except for, you know, mainly, like, all boys instead of just football players. And it was interesting, I'll say the least. Some events coming up are our Seventh Annual Talent Show, which is March 15, and our additions are in the works. Junior prom tickets are being sold as we currently speak. Senior prom is also in the works in terms of planning and organizing. This Saturday is the dodgeball tournament for Minithon, which was supposed to be last Friday, but then we got snowed out. So, now it's this Saturday during the day. Additionally, AP exam registrations are currently going on. And coming up, March 17, is the Quimpo Spaghetti Dinner. And what I really wanted to talk about tonight was the Student Forum for School Safety and how there's, I guess I could call it a club now. We have, like, a couple of meetings, and they are talking about, like, school safety improvements, of course. And actually, this coming Wednesday, we're planning in, well, the high school at least, is planning to participate in the national walkout. It's a non-political walkout. It's not Republican versus Democrat. It's not anti-gun versus pro-gun or whatever. It's mainly just for everyone to stand in solidarity with the victims of all school shootings and to really send a message to our government in saying there needs to be a change in school safety.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Tran.
You're welcome.
And that brings us to our Board Committee reports, and that leads us to the Facilities Committee. Ms. Mitchell?
I just want to say I'm really glad that you guys are involved and that it's not necessarily some type of political thing. Really proud of the young people lately. So, good job on that. So, the Facilities Committee report, there was, recently, it advertised a request for qualification for construction management services, and we had a shortlist from there. They, we scored various different construction management companies and came up with a shortlist of, I believe, three that we are gonna move forward with in terms of getting a full proposal for. And I'm just looking here at some of the timelines to inform you about. The successful companies are going to submit a formal proposal by March 30. They are also going to conduct a 45-minute interview. We are, I believe, gonna pick two finalists from the top three that, that we've submitted. Somebody can correct me if I'm wrong on that. And, yeah, I'm, I'm just reading it here, the two finalists. So, we're gonna review and analyze those proposals by April 4. And then, from there, we're going to select two finalists to do 45-minute interviews to share with us their proposal. Regarding Tohicken Valley Appraisals, there were two appraisals for Tohicken Valley, and the results are gonna be presented at the April 5 Facilities Meeting. We also have an update on the high school roof. If you've been following that, there have been some ongoing issues with the high school roof. And for the last couple of weeks, there has not been any leaks there, so that's really good news. The Nightig Elementary School, just...
Did it just stop a week in?
Well, it's, it's fixed for now. As far as I know, there's no, no issue. So, I don't know if you call that fixed.
Kelly?
Yes.
Who, who made the repairs?
I was on a break.
Okay. So, that was like a warranty repair?
Correct.
So, it wasn't the solar panels?
It was not.
Okay.
And if you remember, there was a little bit of back and forth on finger pointing. So, that was finally resolved. So, that's great news. Also, just an update in regards to, to Nightig. If you've been staying up to date with what's going on there, half of the property is on the Richland Township side. Half of it is on the Quakertown Borough site. And my understanding is that Richland Township has been working with us. Now, did they actually donate the land? Am I saying that correctly, or they're just allowing us to only have to work with Quakertown Borough? If you could provide some clarity.
Right. So, we have a meeting scheduled. Earl has to come in. Our discussion is formal right now.
Yeah, so, it'll make things a lot easier for us because we would only have to work within one township.
Which township is the physical building actually located in?
Quakertown Borough.
Okay, and so...
So, it'll be easier if we just had to go with, work through the borough for those various red tape rather than having to go through two separate. And let's see if there's anything else. I believe, did anybody, you have anything else you wanna add?
So, there was, the last we talked on Trumbausville, there was going to be, I think it was this week coming up?
So, if the weather cooperated, it would, this week, the forensic study, the 10-by-10 area, push back next week. Whatever happens on Sunday will be a larger one.
Yeah, so, they're gonna do that forensic study on the roof issue at Trumbausville. Where's it gonna be? They're gonna cut out a 10-foot-by-10-foot area, and then...
And for those waiting on an update, as far as if there's any liability, it's not looking like we will have any opportunity to recoup cost. I believe that the roof is 20 years old, so it's a little bit, it's not old enough to really need these type of repairs. But unfortunately, we cannot locate the paperwork from 20 years ago to really look thoroughly at the contract. So, if anybody was interested in that, it's not, it is looking like we're going to have to foregat the cost for that, unfortunately.
If we can't find the contract or anything like that, is there a reason we need to do the forensic study anymore?
There still is a possibility, if they find something, we can still go back.
Any questions on that? Any other questions? I think I covered it. Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mitchell.
I think the last thing is the, the interviews with the potential management, contract management companies. Is that, is it something that we have to, we announce to the...
Other than what I've already mentioned, is there something specific that you were thinking about the actual...
No, I just wanted to let...
Oh, the three that we chose? I think that's a good idea. We probably should... We probably should.
So, so of the, of the grouping that they submitted, the RFQ came in, then the administration took it upon themselves, they, they had a scoring sheet, and they scored the different, the different companies that submitted for this construction management. I narrowed it down to three, and then they asked for the full bid. And in which case, it'll go down to two. And then a team of us, I believe, including the architect, will interview them and, and then determine who, who will get awarded the contract. So I don't know that there's anything more to tell you about that.
Well, I'll share the names. Is that okay?
Yep.
Just thought it would be interesting if I were you. So one of them is Dee Huey. The other one, I'm going to butcher this name, Fadivia. Did I get that right? All right.
Sounds good.
Sounds good. And Reynolds. And the, the scoring was very thorough. I was impressed by it. There are multiple, multitude of criteria, as well as, you know, talking to other districts. And I also know that many folks actually went to some of these other districts to take a look at the work. And so we can kind of get an idea also what we want for our renovations to look like. So it's very thorough, and those are the three that are going to move forward. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That brings us to the President's report. The President doesn't have a report, but would like to make a comment. Today's International Women's Day. I just wanted to recognize that. I can say that I have been lucky enough to have many, many very strong and talented women in my life that have shaped my life much for the better. So I just wanted to mention that. Okay, next is the discussion of upcoming action items. And what we're going to do, we have a fiscal agenda tonight, which will be a vote. And we've heard from the public at times that they would like to make comments after our discussions. So what we're going to do is we're going to have our discussion on the fiscal agenda, which will then be followed by the public comment, for anybody that would like to do so, then followed by the actual vote. So if you go to the fiscal agenda, number 11, we basically are being asked to approve a professional escrow agreement. There's a professional escrow agreement required by Richland Township for the subdivision and land development plan approved for two parcels in Richland Township. Our solicitor, Mr. Garten, reviewed, has reviewed and approved the terms of the agreement. An escrow account will be created in the amount of $2,000, which will cover the township's expenses for professionals and consultants related to the project. The business services department is recommending approval of the agreement. Does anybody have any comments or would like to discuss this?
I would motion to approve.
Okay. We're, we're not voting just yet. I'm assuming this is for the parcel of land that, that we bought?
It's for, no, it's for the Tohicken project.
That's what I was wondering.
Oh, the Tohicken project. Okay. All right. That makes sense. Thank you, sir. Okay. Since there's no discussion, I'll open the floor for public comment on the fiscal agenda. Would anybody have any public comment for the fiscal agenda tonight before the vote? Okay, no. Which brings us to the fiscal agenda. Kind of cool how we're going in circles here.
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the fiscal agenda? Dr. Sedikum so moved it. Do we have a second? Mr. Ockmanowicz, any discussion? No, we already had that. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed. Motion passes unanimously.
So I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is that, is, is that a format that we're going to make a habit of? Because it squashes the discussion leading up to the vote.
No, actually, it doesn't. What it does is, is people will hear us have our discussions. And then if anybody has any comment based on our discussions, then-
So then we can have more discussion?
Potentially.
Oh, man.
I've heard a lot of people say they would, I mean, it makes sense. And as a member of the community, if, if there's discussion before the board even has any deliberation on it, I, I mean, I might want something else to share.
Yeah, I'm all for it. Because this was an easy one, nice $2,000 escrow.
Yeah, we'll see how it goes. Let's test it out.
But the thing is, in, in some of the meetings, you know, we are extremely generous with public comments.
Right.
Extremely. And when we get into a more, some more involved stuff coming down the road, you know, I just, I have, I don't have an opinion, but I have some concerns about opening up public comment over and over and over and over because it's the board's meeting. And I, I don't want it to get taken over by diatribe when we come to more pressing issues. So that's, that's my only concern about this particular-
Well, we'll limit all diatribes to board members, how's that?
Okay.
Not to be a stickler about things too, but we, we do, by board policy, follow Robert's rules. I'm not sure if our solicitor could comment. Are we required to follow Robert's rules? And would this change go against anything in there that we're blinded to, to follow? Or, I mean, it, it seems like a trivial thing. We can change it at will, but are we required?
Robert's rules are just a guideline. You're not legally obligated. It's just a guideline, and you try your best to manage meetings by using a set of rules. But what you just talked about now is not a problem.
Thank you, sir.
If it gets out of hand, I'll just buy a popcorn machine, and we'll put it up there.
There you go.
All right. Moving on to information items. Statement of financial interest for 2017. This is specific to the board members. We need to fill those out. When are those due, Alice?
May 1st.
May 1st. Alice sent out an email about that. There's information in, in the board docs on it. You can either do it online or fill out the actual hard copy form. Another reminder about the board briefing updates that are located in board docs. All right. That brings us to communication items. There are no communication items. Okay. Which brings us to any new business by the board. Does anybody have any new business they would like to bring up?
She's under public comment time.
Yes.
Not to you.
That, that's next. Okay. With no new business, we'll move to the last public comment portion of the meeting. Does anybody have any public comment? Anything, anything, please approach and, yes. You know the drill.
About this chronic absenteeism, this, is this a state policy now or a district policy? I mean, did this, is, are the state, is the state making you adhere to this 18 days or?
Yes, it's 10% of the school year.
Okay. Because I'm in a situation, this really has me aggravated. Before school started, right before school started, my son got a bad eye infection. He had to go to eye doctors, to a specialist. We went through like eight doctor's appointments in three months. That's eight days of school, I'm finding now. I brought in my notes. I brought in my, my doctor's notes. I signed him out when he had to leave. I signed him in when he was late. I'm doing everything right. But now, because it's added up to 16 days, half days have added up to 16 days. You're, you know, for parents who are not bad parents, who are trying to do the right thing, this is really a hard thing. Because now, if my son, you know, wakes up sick, you're not going to trust me that I write a note that says my son's sick. I have to take him to the doctor. I have to pay a copay, or I have to send him to school sick so he can go to the nurse to be written off for the day. It just seems not smart and, and hard on good parents like myself. You know, and my son, he's not a chronic absentee. This is the first school year that he's had so many times off. The flu hit us. I missed six days of work. It's just been, you know, bad luck has, has caused him to have a lot of absenteeism, absenteeisms this year. Not that he's a bad kid, not that I'm a bad parent. I'm doing all the right things. But now, it doesn't even matter. It doesn't matter if I write my son a note that says, you know, he was late because he was sick, he missed a day because it was sick. It doesn't matter that I'm doing the right thing. But parents and kids are going to get punished for this. I mean-
Well, I don't know if there's any punishment.
Well, this-
And I don't know that you need my advice, but I would just ignore it. And you're doing the fine job, and don't worry about it.
But after a certain amount of absenteeisms, they may say that my son can't walk in graduation.
But the punishment is to the school district, not to your son.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with you.
Because the school district is going to keep giving you these aspects. I, I can't speak, I don't want to speak dirt harder. But it's a state mandate that affects our ranking in some test. It's got nothing to do with you being a good parent and taking your kid and having him go to doctors. I'm assuming they'll continue to let him because they know your son is sick. But that's going to reflect poorly on us as a district, unfortunately. And we're not, I wouldn't stop you from taking your kid to your doctor appointments and everything. We just have to understand that for some of these children, we're, we're going to take a hit.
But haven't, haven't, I, I heard somewhere that after so many absentees, you know, absenteeisms to a student, that they will not be allowed to walk in graduation.
That, Dr. Horner?
So I think it's, there's two conflicting things here. So we have the chronic absenteeism, which I presented tonight, which is the reflection on the school district. And then we have the, the rules that are put upon us in terms of absenteeism for students in general. Those are not changing. So that has more to do with unexcused absences. After three unexcused absences, so that would be no note or no reason to be absent, then we are required to send what's called the first legal letter, which is a representation of a legal document that goes to the parents that explains that it's important for their child to be in school. If they have another unexcused absence after that, they actually do get a citation from the magistrate. If they're compulsory school age, which would be up to age 17, they would get a citation there for every other unexcused day after that. If parents are sending in notes, that is okay up to 10 days. But again, in, in the Pennsylvania legal system with attendance for compulsory school age, after 10 days, every day, we do require a doctor's note. That's not a district policy, that's a state policy. So-
You're giving those.
But after, yes. And so what happens sometimes is parents will say, you know, the first eight or nine times, my child was very sick. And they went to the doctor, and we had notes. And now it's day 11, and, you know, they have a stomach ache. And they are still required to have a doctor's note for those days. So that is sometimes difficult for parents. But that's not a district rule, that's, that's a state rule.
I think as long as you're doing everything, as far as documenting everything, you're doing what you can do.
Is there a rule though, or, or something that, that if a student has so many days, a senior has so many days of absence, that they're not going to be allowed to walk in graduation? Is, is-
I think those would have to be un-
I believe it's unexcused.
Unexcused, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Because it just, you know, that just, you know.
Sounds to me like you're okay.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Hoffman, one of the things that probably wouldn't be helpful, but there are folks in Washington DC and the Education Department, folks in the PDE, trying their best to write regulations, do things to make things better. And a lot of times, all we are is the, the, you know, everything's flowing downhill, we just get to catch it. So a lot of times, we have no idea. Like, they're probably just trying to collect all kinds of data to do all kinds of analyses that we have no clue. And so for us, it seems very arbitrary. But, you know, it's people trying to probably invent systems and measure things that have a reason. You know, they didn't just wake up and decide to piss us off. But I don't know if there's any way to try to shed light on the purpose behind these. But, you know, give them credit, they're probably trying to do something positive. But in my mind, the people that know best, you know, might not necessarily be in Washington or in Harrisburg.
Stephen Ripper, Hancock Township. I would like to speak to just what John just spoke in earlier. Ms. Mitchell said is our voice. And it seems to me that our governments, both state and federal, have a habit of mandating things to us and then not getting, you know, not paying for it, unfunded mandates. I think we should tell them to take their unfunded mandates and find a hole to bury them in. Because obviously, they don't realize, just what John says. I think some of these people are just justifying their position and the money that they're collecting. They're being overpaid. And oftentimes, the jobs that they do are, are just inadequate. They keep coming up with new plans, new programs, something every year to compound the work that has to be done by our administration, who are trying to get the school district to operate as efficiently as it can and provide for all our children, while the state just keeps dumping down on us, like John just said. You know, we've got to start telling these people, you know, enough is enough. And I agree. We, you know, we have to start fighting back. And, and on that issue, maybe the way to fight back is to use the Hegelian dialectic and make it work in our favor. So, you know, let's not just sit here and take it. Let's just tell them, PDE, two-thirds of PDE in our state are feds. We don't need them here anymore. I thought that department was supposed to be gutted. They didn't gut it enough, as far as I'm concerned. And, you know, so really, seriously, we can do it in our own community, and we have to let the state know that, that they were tired of getting mandates. We have an $850,000 mandate for the ESL program. And I mean, it's ridiculous for us to have to assume all that cost. And, you know, I'm just a taxpayer now, but I still have a voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ripper. Any other public comment?
For other board members, this form is really quick to fill out. Alice would appreciate if you got it to her. We had a lot of opportunity tonight to fill it out, so I'm going to pass mine down, as an example for us, our slower form pillars.
I'm ready to fill it out.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wee. I wasn't, I, okay. There we go. So.
Oh, it's being reviewed.
Yeah.
It's being reviewed on the second line.
That's fast. I wanted to take a moment.
Oh, good gosh.
She, she shouldn't have to chase us down for those things.
I just want you to know, I thought mine was first.
I put a reminder in my-
It's, it's due when, May?
Yeah, you got all day.
Yeah, we got four.
Okay. The dates for board member calendars, coming up Thursday, March 22nd, we have a policy committee meeting in the Board Caucus Conference Room, number three at the DSC. That starts at 5:45 PM, followed at 6 o'clock by the Finance Committee meeting in Community Room A at the DSC. And at 7 o'clock, there's the regular voting meeting here in the Community Room at the DSC. And as a reminder, Saturday, March 24th, is the next board retreat, and that begins at 8 AM. Which brings us to the favorite part of these meetings, and that is the adjournment.
I can't believe it. Open time of the day.
Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Dr. Sedikum, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Jackson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye opposed. This meeting is adjourned.